Five o'clock. Five o'clock, call meeting to order. Ted, you want to lead us?
Sure.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's get some minutes processed here.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the July 11th non-public meeting minutes. Yeah?
Second.
The one discussion item, just apologizing to Colleen for not having the police approach the microphones during discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Look or the regular?
In the regular, yeah. I often forget, we get into conversation, people sitting in the front row, but I got to remember, have them either come to the chair or go to the podium so that we don't miss the things that people say.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the July 11th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All regular meetings will begin at 5:00 PM. The select board will meet on the following dates, Monday, August 8th and August 29th. All meetings will be held upstairs here in Town Hall and will be held by Zoom. Zoom information can be found on the town's website at plymouth-nh.org. Any citizens wishing to be listed on the select board's agenda should notify the Town Hall before 12:00 PM the Friday before the scheduled meeting. And a reminder to this group that I will not be available on the 8th, so Bill will be hosting that meeting. Bartlett Road reconstruction, we have an update here, beginning on July 27th, which is next week Wednesday.
Oh, this week?
Yeah. Days are flying by. Through September 2nd, Bartlett Road will be closed for road construction. Any questions or concerns may be directed to the Plymouth Highway Department at 536-1623. All right, first up, we have, I think, is he on Zoom? We have Roy Boyer and James Kahn about transportation of municipal solid waste transfer station agreement, a five-year extension. Jim, do you want to, do you want to, yeah, you want to come sit with us? Is that, is it just you, is Roy, Roy?
He should be here, hopefully he's here because he's going to...
I'm on the Zoom.
Oh, you're on the Zoom, okay, great. Thanks for joining us, Roy.
You're very welcome, thanks for having me.
Do you want to intro what we're talking about, Jim? Just give us a, us a high-level overview of what this is?
I believe this is for the next five-year contract for the hauling of the solid waste, just strictly the hauling. And glass, I believe, a new item on this contract is glass. And I don't know what the previous contract was.
So before, before Jesse left, this contract or Amendment 1 came in. And as you can see from the rates, they're going up significantly over time. From the prior March 2023, I'm sorry, 2023, the hauling is 263.93. And it's going proposed. Sorry.
To 345?
Yeah.
Or is that just glass? No, that's just glass.
That's just the glass, and we never had...
Including the glass for hauling. Roy, is that correct?
I can actually, I'll give you a little stop, how it started out. Jesse reached out to me, asking for some pricing to haul the glass for the Town of Plymouth. At that point in time, the town since 1997, so we've been, we've extended this contract on many occasions. So what I did is I mentioned to Jesse that the contract was coming up next year. I said I'd like to do is give you a price to haul in the glass, at the same time, give you guys some pricing now for the next contract. I'm sure there's no, not a shock to anybody here, but the cost of, our industry has gone, skyrocketed since the pandemic, cost of fuel, materials, labor, everything has just gone out of sight. So I think it's, I wanted to get a price for you now, rather than wait till April when costs continue to rise and try to get something locked down for you guys for another contract term. So what I did is I put together, you'll see on page one, you'll see glass offer, which will, that was for, just if you guys took the glass alone by itself and just let the contract run till its end date, which is March 31st. And the option two was an extension for another five years, giving you slightly better pricing on the glass and as well as giving you some pricing for the MSW.
Roy, what if we do not put glass in there or we have another plan for the glass? What would that price be at that point?
It would just be the MSW pricing as it's laid out.
So the 365?
No, 365.
Yeah, yeah. 365, yeah.
So this is only glass? And then this would be a five-year extension on the municipal and then glass for five years?
Right, the two different tables.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, yep, all right, I get it.
Which is significant from the 263.93 that you're paying right now.
Right, so we would be looking at 263.93 becoming 365.
A little over $100 more per ton.
Yep.
Assuming this is...
Up...
No, that's just a haul.
Or haul. This is just the hauling fees, this is, it's not disposal.
It's nothing to do with the landfill.
Right.
This is strictly hauling.
And glass, so glass we make, they pay us when we send glass away? Or do we pay for glass too?
We pay for glass.
We do.
Well, we haven't paid yet.
Right, we've been stockpiling the glass. Yes, we've been stockpiling the glass. Yep.
So how many hauls do we do per year?
For glass?
No, for...
Just in general?
MSW.
We do three a week, every week.
So 150?
150.
But I've cut it down, just started cutting it down to a week. Monday and Friday.
So 150 and if we do it, well, I mean, maybe if we do 100, that's great, but at 100, we're talking about an extra 10,000. 150, 15, 10 to 15,000 is the increase, yeah. Are there other options other than waste management, or is that really our best path, Jim?
Casella, but I think they might have looked at that before.
Yeah.
I think Casella was quite a bit higher to haul.
And we've done, we've used waste management? I understand.
Like, a couple weeks after I started, so I had nothing
Right.
prior to this.
Have we used waste management for a long time, is that?
I believe they, how long has waste been with the Town of Plymouth, Roy?
Oh, did we lose Roy?
He's back, well, no.
Roy?
He said since 97.
It's been several years.
Long time, yeah.
So we should, we should at the very least look at our options.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking, if we're talking about a 10 to 15,000 dollar increase, it does feel like we should.
How much time do we have?
We have until March.
March 31st of '23.
So these numbers will, will hold till then?
I don't think the numbers will hold, I think you would have to recalculate them at that point.
We do it in a year. And he held on to this for quite a while because it didn't get approved. Because I think this contract was only for...
15 days from the original letter.
That was back to 13th of June.
Yeah, so he's already held this price for us for...
Roy, are you still there or are you gone? So we can reach out to him and let him know that the board wants us to get some pricing from another company, there may only be one other company out there, I don't know.
Casella and Tri-Wichers.
Okay.
It can't hurt that.
That'd be great, yeah.
And I'll just have him write it up. Do you want me to include the glass too?
You might.
Same.
Yeah, yeah, see, if we could get a, if we get something similar to just compare against, and, you know, we'll then you can come back and say, you know, if you say, hey, you know, it's a, it's a couple extra bucks for this one, but for these reasons, I still want to go with, like, we're more than happy to have that conversation. It doesn't have to be the lowest bid, obviously, but, you know, we
I'm back.
We're trying to save money if we can. Oh, Roy, thank you.
Yeah, I lost the connection, I apologize, I had to sign back in.
That's, that's okay.
Is there a specific tonnage per load?
No, it's, it's just a load, whatever a full container is.
Yeah, there could be three ton in it and you're still going to pay them. All they, all waste is the hauling charge. Then you pay tonnage on top of that.
You pay tonnage, tonnage at the landfill or the destination.
You've got to root Casella.
Right.
So if a guy's got a bigger truck, he can haul more tonnage.
No, it's still going to be hauling away whatever
Whatever we have in there.
Our container.
Because we only get, we only get 40 yard containers.
Forty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Imagine it averages out.
Yeah, we average maybe 13 ton a week, you know, a haul.
And that's a, that's a pretty heavy load.
And depending on what's going on in the Town of Plymouth.
Yeah, some weeks are worse than others, I'm sure.
Glass would be heavier.
Yeah, glass is heavier. I think a skid steer bucket of glass after we run it over is about 1,500 pounds.
So Roy, could you keep these prices in effect until the end of August? The board would like to see what else is out there for prices.
Well, I mean, they're in, you mean, the, the prices I've submitted to, they actually, they really expired a while ago and I extended them already because of, because of the, because Jesse had left and didn't notify me, so I'd have to seek approval to get them extended again.
How long has the Town of Plymouth been with waste?
What's that?
How long has the Town of Plymouth dealt with waste management?
Since 1997. 25 years.
Is this, Roy, do you know if this is the first time that the prices have increased this substantially?
Yes, first time, yeah. These are the biggest increases we've seen in our industry since, since I've, I mean, I've been here for over 30 years and I've never seen anything like this. That's, I mean, so, once we get to the, to get to the point where we're covering our costs, you see that the, you know, the increments go up a lot in smaller increments, but we, we need to recover the costs. I mean, diesel fuel alone, since we started this contract, it's more than doubled. Lubricants have more than doubled, steel's gone up 300%, tires, there's nothing that has gone down. I mean, our costs have gone up dramatically. There's a national CDL driver shortage, we had to pay our drivers across the country a lot more wages to make sure we didn't lose them, and the ones that we needed to replace, we needed to make sure we were a attractive place for them to come to work. So, yeah, all that, I mean, right now, I can tell you, right now, I'm hauling you at 263, I'm losing money every time I take, I take that container out. I've been losing for the last two years, but we're honoring the rates because we have them in writing, but we need to try to recover some of those costs.
Do you think we could have, until our next meeting, to make a decision? We, we have two members absent.
And that would be what, August 8th, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll do that.
I would move that we you know, go through our, go through our process of look, looking at three options.
As many as we can get.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if we could get two other options, it would just make us feel a whole lot more confident around a 38% increase, which we understand, we're, we're facing price increases all over the place too, Roy, we're, we don't think you're you're doing anything untoward.
We've established a policy of getting multiple, yeah, quotes.
I mean, there's, there's a chance, I mean, at 365, someone could come in at 350 or whatever, but I would hope that 25 years of service would account for something, but if someone's significantly...
We, we actually, we were just talking about that before you joined, that, you know, we, we want to take Jim's recommendation on, on, you know, who it is.
Yeah.
It, it's not a situation necessarily where we're just going to say whoever comes in with the lowest number is absolutely going to get the contract. Lots of things to take into account there. And certainly, our long relationship with you is, is part of that, so we, we'll get some more numbers and we'll put it back in front of the board when we have more of a full slate next week, or in two weeks. And hopefully we can make some...
Okay, and if I'll just like, reach out to Jim, just say if, if someone comes in and then it's lower and you need me to try to shave a little bit, I could probably do a few, I could do a little bit, but if it's significantly lower, that's most, most likely I won't be able to do that, but if it's close, and you stay with us, then I'll, I'll see what I can do about, you know, getting it reduced slightly.
Will do.
Thanks, Roy, we appreciate that.
Thanks, Roy.
You're welcome.
Great. Anything else for Jim while we have him here?
He's got a lot more later on.
We got more stuff later on? Okay, should I, anything that I can move up or no? Oh, no, we'll, we'll take your, your new business in a moment. Let's get through these other two things real quick. If you're okay with that.
We'll just call you back to the seat.
Yeah, you get out of the hot seat. Temporarily, yeah, temporarily. All right, we have an email from Karina Park. Where's this email from, Karina Park? Oh, this is the one about the, about the broadband, I've got sort of a partial. Is, is Karina here or not here? This is just for us to discuss?
We did not invite her here, we just, we brought the email before the board so that you would see what we received for information regarding what their plan is for broadband. And just wanted to make sure that the board knew that it sounds like we're going to, we did have a technician that stopped by.
All right, hold on, let me just give context quickly for anybody who's listening. So we have an email from Karina Park, from Grafton County Broadband Committee, which includes a high-level design for last-mile connections through the community. These are, this is like a spec that we would use if we were going to go get grant money or something to build out a fiber internet network here in town. She also talks about the middle mile project, which has completed designs and is in the final stages of cost estimating. And the backbone network is to get high-speed internet to the municipality so that then, you know, last mile can get built out from there. And then she mentioned, and I'll let you take that back over, that some technicians were going to stop in at Town Hall.
They had stopped in here. And they looked at our our room where our main computers are, and we believe that they're actually going to put some equipment here at Town Hall. So we wanted to make sure the board was aware and you guys are okay with that equipment being put here and us being responsible, so to speak, for that. So I just wanted, I mean, we want this broadband throughout, but...
Did we get a sense for the footprint of this equipment?
No, nothing more than what has come in, so...
It says in a server closet or a weatherproof cabinet outside the building. So that doesn't sound very large, but it's a good point.
And you said the technicians came and looked at the space?
They did, they just came and looked at the space.
They didn't have any concern about the space, they didn't say
I'm aware of.
Need to upgrade the cooling or any of that kind of thing? Okay, good.
And there's not much room in that server room for sure. So it's going to be very limited, I don't know how much more heat these put out than what's already going on, I mean, so we'll have to have a better thorough understanding of what they're going to be putting here.
Yeah.
Do they have any special power requirements, like conditioning?
So, yeah. So do you want to have
It might be nice for them to
Someone come in?
Yeah, it would be nice to have someone come in and talk to us a little bit about this. I'm also really interested to know more about how this, how this applies or doesn't apply to what the electric company is doing. I, I think it doesn't apply, but I'm...
Sounds like it's a different service, but we can ask.
Yeah, at which point, I don't, you know, and I think about the town investing, you know, the cost estimate here, the town investing almost $11 million to, to build out last-mile fiber connections when the NHGC is already going to do that, I, I'm just not sure. I'm not sure what this is in terms of benefit for the town, so I, I need to understand that a little bit more.
So we'll ask them to come in on the 8th? Or do you want them to come in when you?
I would love for them to come in in four weeks, if that's possible, instead of two, which is the 20-something?
Yeah.
29th?
It's just here. 29th. Any, any thoughts from you on all that?
No.
No?
I'm listening.
Perfect. Letter from the Hebron Firefighters Association. So we got a letter about a fundraiser that they're doing for the, for the Hebron Firefighters Association. Tom, do you want to speak to this at all, did you see this letter?
I just did today, it's Chief Fisher's retirement party after 47 years.
Okay.
I think they just sent it to you all as an FYI and posted perhaps for the region, the people do also. He's a legend.
That's, it's a long time. Would you like us to, to sponsor this and, and have us, have the spa, I mean, I assume it's, it's mostly your folks who, who will attend this event?
Yeah, and anybody's welcome, but we will, you know, we'll have some representation, I assure you. I don't know that we'll buy a whole table, like, that's, that's what they're asking.
They're asking for a table of 10.
But there's also individual tickets, which I, I know some people will just buy and not go.
Yep.
They're also asking for a contribution of $450. So if the fire department is already doing that through, were you doing that through the association?
Oh, they were asking, I think we're like...
Yeah, they're asking for a contribution of $450 to reserve a table for 10.
Yeah. I mean, it's up to you, like, we'll definitely be involved.
You're already doing it?
Yeah.
I mean, if you're already doing it and there's no reason for us both to do it or whatever, I, I'm not sure.
That's fine.
Okay. That being said, all of the other board members signed it in case you did want to go that route, so I don't know.
What's the date on that?
June 30th?
Not June, August, August 28th.
We posted on how we do with that.
Okay.
We have an association, we have a meeting, so...
Yeah, it did, all the other board members indicated support for it, so, you know, work with Ann and we're, we're supportive of supporting you.
Okay.
And them. That sounds reasonable. Okay. Any other, I don't, any other discussion on that from other board members?
No.
Great. And back in the hot seat, our favorite waste management professional.
Me?
Yeah. Mr. Kahn. Pemmy Tree Works for Cemetery Tree Trimming, we have a, a purchase order here.
Looking down big pine?
There's going to be a couple and you're going to limb the rest of them. I had a quote from Tottenham, they were four grand a day. That's all they gave, four grand a day, that's all they would give.
Okay, so there's, they just give a day rate, it's whatever they can do?
That's what their crane cost.
For one crow?
Yeah, just a crane and a crow was four grand a day. And I called Clasins and met with him and he never got back to me on a quote.
And so I take it you assume this is more than a three-day job?
Yeah, yeah, because they're trimming that whole row of lines in the cemetery.
Yep, this is the one on fairgrounds?
Yes, yeah, and there's some pretty, I believe it, branch fell through somebody's car last year. Through their window.
They're big old trees.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, looks like they've got chipping the brush and removing the wood, that's good.
And I won't do it till November when the cemetery is closed, so it doesn't impact anybody there.
Makes sense.
Then maybe the ground will be a little bit harder, so don't mess any of the grounds up to replace grass.
How are we in terms of, of budget? We plan for this?
We did not plan for this amount. So we found three additional, three lines that we could take these from, and they should be listed right there.
Yeah, I see.
I know one was capital outlay, which is 9,000.
And is that the, is that the budget, like, the amount we expected was the 9,000?
We actually only expected 2,500.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we took the 9,000 there and, I'm sorry, there was 9,000 for trees, yes. Sorry, 9,000 was the trees. We found the additional amount in highway, in cemetery and also care of trees within the budget.
Okay.
So we did anticipate nine, we didn't anticipate anymore.
Well, and we had the care of trees line too, so that, it's only the, what did you say the 3,500 came from?
That's coming from the cemetery, the 2,500 is coming from the cemetery.
Okay.
And then the 4.6 line is coming from care of trees.
Cemetery, okay. That all sounds fair.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the quote for Pemmy Tree Works to do the cemetery tree trimming in the amount of 15,000.
Second.
Any discussion? I feel comfortable with the no competitive bid because we did have a, one alternative, which was the day rate, which seems safer to just...
Which may or may not be more, we don't know.
Yeah, if you have it, five days is 20 grand.
Yeah, exactly, I'm, I'm more comfortable with a...
I got a chainsaw.
Get over there and get to work, Ted.
I have a 13-inch saw for some of them.
I got a pole saw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Sounds good, and now I'm going to have to make you sit again. We've got two more people between you and your last few items.
So the only thing that, the only thing that we need from them, Jim, is to make sure that we have a current certificate of insurance and that they, if, if they're not incorporated, then I'll need a W-9, so I'll get together with you on that.
Okay. I'll be back.
You'll be back. Tom, you can come talk to us about Lake, Lakes Region Mutual Fire Aid for the Lakes Region Fire Communication Service.
Yes, good evening. So this is their annual invoice for communication services for calendar 2021. Those communities that do January 1 and braces enough to allow us to make the payment that I want issued. So in addition to communication services, they run a training division, which affords us the opportunity to train, for instance, they just received a grant for Fire 1 and 2 courses that will pay for the tuition, pay for backfill. They also provide command and control assistance at scenes when we need it. And they're well-managed, we have a seat on their board of directors, they're fiscally well-managed. As an example, they just completed about a million dollars worth of communications upgrade in the last couple of years, and because of the fact that they had capital money set aside and the bond rates for such, our rate, as you see in my letter, actually went down almost 2% in this fiscal, last fiscal year for them. So I would, we're very happy with their services.
Honestly.
What's that?
Seeing a 2%, almost a 2% discount, that's a
Yeah.
Given everything else we've seen, that's a, a surprise, a, a nice one.
Like us, I think their health insurance was one of the issues that went down. So that's good, we're very happy with the service and would ask your support on payment.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the Lakes Region Mutual Fire Aid Communication Service for the sum of $56,287.59.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks, Tom. And that is it for purchase orders. And on to new and other business, we have a, a guest this week. County Commissioner Omar Ahern. County Commissioner Omar Ahern, uh, to give us.
Do you want me in front or do you want me here at the, uh?
Do you want to sit or do you want to stand? That's your choice. Well, if you'd like to stand, the podium's yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to be here and talk with you a little bit tonight. A lot of the things that you've been talking about are many of the same issues that we've been talking about, uh, at Grafton County Commissioner meetings. It's good to see the PBTV here. Just give you a little heads up. Just about every week or every two weeks, I do a little program that the PBTV folks put together for me. And it's called Just Omer, J-U-S-T-O-M-E-R. And I, I'm not quite sure how it all works, but they can figure, they can tell you how to do it. So that is a way that I'm giving, uh, the people of Grafton County what's going on at, at the county level. I'm one of three county commissioners. We are responsible by state statute for the operation of, uh, the nursing home, the county nursing home, which has a hundred and thirty-four beds in it, but because of COVID and the federal and the state rules and regulations, we can't find enough nursing staff, environmental staff, uh, to meet the ratio of, uh, residents to, uh, the nursing staff. So we've only budgeted to, um, meet a hundred people in the nursing home. And we're going to have an even bigger waiting list because of that. Uh, we're also responsible for the operations of the Department of Corrections, where we have, uh, the jail for pre-trial confinement. And we have the, uh, Department of Corrections, the House of Correction, for those that, uh, those people that are found guilty or pled guilty to a criminal offense and they're sentenced to a year and a day or less, uh, in, in prison. And that's another issue where we don't have enough help. Uh, we're, you know, we've got a, a lot of our corrections officers are working overtime. Uh, we don't have, one of the, the biggest things that we're having trouble with is we can't get enough labor out of the Department of Corrections to work on the farm. We rely on, uh, they're now called residents of the Department of Corrections. We're not supposed to call them inmates anymore. And because of the, uh, bail reform, which in my opinion has not worked well at all for the, the people on the outside, and because of, uh, the, um, closing of the court or the, or the, uh, partial closing, uh, of the court because of COVID over the last two years. Uh, there's just been not a lot of, um, people that, uh, should be tried or, or can be sentenced. And so we don't have that labor, um, that we need to properly run the farm. And as a result, uh, we did, we did not plant any, uh, major vegetable fields last, last year. And we didn't, uh, plant any, uh, this is the farm manager's decision. We did plant, um, potatoes, winter squash, pumpkins and sweet corn last growing season. And we've done the same thing this year because it's very, uh, low labor, uh, intensive. The, uh, the farm is a big issue right now because, uh, about three weeks ago, our farm manager, who's only been on board, I think for just less than two years as farm manager, he resigned as of the end of July. And so, uh, that created, uh, some consternation and, uh, but cooler heads prevailed. And we are now advertising that position. Uh, the commissioners are not meeting this week because this is, I think, the fifth Tuesday and we only meet, uh, four Tuesdays a month. So don't know whether or not we've got some people that have come in, uh, and applied for the farm manager job. Not trying to suggest to anybody in this room that they would be excellent as farm managers and we need them, or, or nursing staff or Department of Corrections staff. We, we need them. Those of you that are listening, if you're a nurse, uh, an LNA, an IRN, we need you at Grafton County. If you've got a, a military background or you've got a, uh, you know, law enforcement background, we could use you at the Department of Corrections. And we're also looking for a farm manager. Some of the new things that have happened in the last couple of years is we have a new IT department, SNS, uh, which does a lot of work up in northern New Hampshire. They are, um, the new, uh, IT, um, folks at Grafton County. Been a few, um, challenges, you know, transferring from, uh, an in-house, uh, IT manager to an outside provider, but we're, we're working on that. ARPA, uh, the ARPA money, uh, we got about seventy-five million dollars, uh, from Washington DC. But you got to be careful where the money comes from and, uh, the, you know, the, the, uh, the risk is you'll spend it on a lot of things that, you know, if you buy something now, you've got to continue to pay for it, you know, or, or renew it in the years ahead. The commissioners made a decision that we're only going to use these for one-time things, like the farm needed a new tractor. That was before the farm manager told us he was going to resign. Uh, there's, there's a whole bunch of things that we, uh, did suggest to the executive committee of the county delegation. And so we haven't spent all of that seventy-five million dollars. Some of the money, um, has gone to the broadband project, uh, that you were discussing here today. And Towne of Wentworth is also dealing with the same, uh, concerns that you were discussing today. The, uh, New Hampshire Electric Co-op with what, with, with what they're doing and what they're offering to some of the communities where they provide the electricity. One of the things that, uh, we, uh, have looked into is it looks like we need a new or rehabilitated county courthouse. Uh, we've got some issues with windows and, and elevators, uh, and so that's something that we're looking into. The cost, we got, we got a report from, uh, some, um, architects and some engineers. And the cost to rehab the existing courthouse is about two to three million dollars cheaper than if we built a brand-new county courthouse up there. So the commissioner is, uh, looking into that with the department heads. And also talking with the, uh, State of New Hampshire judicial folks on that. The, uh, one of the things that the county commissioners decided to do several years ago was to put in the, uh, wood-fired biomass heating plant. And so we've got that, uh, going right now. We buy, it looks like we're buying all of our wood chips from here within Sullivan County. Excuse me, Grafton County. I used to live in Sullivan County. I used to be a commissioner over there. Forgive me. Sometimes that word keeps coming back. So, uh, we're not using a lot of, uh, fossil fuels, uh, to, to heat, uh, the, uh, county complex up there in North Haverhill. But, uh, you know, you know, the discussion about, uh, transporting all of these things, that's a really, that's a real big issue. Uh, they need, you know, the, uh, Bob Birdie from, uh, Rumney, who was in, in charge of, uh, finding the, this, uh, wood chips for the, the county, you know, the cost of diesel has gone up tremendously, you know, in the last several months. And so we, we're kind of compromising a little bit on that. And one of the things that Grafton County has been talking about for the last year or so is S-U-N-F, slightly used nuclear fuel. There is an opportunity for the State of New Hampshire in working, uh, with, uh, a, a fellow who used to work for the Federal Department of Energy, then he went to work for the State of Nevada with their, um, energy, uh, nuclear energy stockpiles out there. When they say nuclear waste, it's not all wasted. It's only two to three percent of that nuclear stockpile down in Seabrook. Only two to three percent of that has been used up. The rest of it is available to be used to, uh, help develop these new nuclear, uh, generators. And so we're kind of looking at that as a way of, uh, trying to provide electricity and heating for the Grafton County comp. Nothing, nothing is going to happen in the next two years or so, but it's something that, uh, the State of New Hampshire should really look into. In fact, the legislature passed a law this past session to put into place a committee to look into using this slightly used nuclear fuel. There's just so much, uh, I'd like to talk with you, but I don't want to take up all of your time. And, uh, you know, some, you know, one of the big issues right now is the increases in fuel. The sheriff's department is very concerned about the increase in fuel for their, uh, job going out and about, you know, transporting, uh, inmates, uh, from the DOC to, to the courthouses around the county. Certainly the, the, um, um, maintenance department, you know, with their plows, snow plows during the winter and, so that's, that's a big issue there. So do you have any questions of me?
Did I hear you write that the, the prison population is down? Is that, is that just because there are fewer, fewer residents? Or is that because of the staffing issue with the Department of Corrections?
No, we, we have a hundred and fifty-bed, uh, facility, our correctional facility, and there are different pods, different sections. Uh, we do have a women's section and some of those women inmates are coming from Co-Was County because Co-Was County does not have a female section. Uh, and they only pay us fifty dollars a day. And it's more like two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a day per, per, um, resident inmate to take care of them. And again, uh, part of the problem is bail reform. There's some people that, you know, they'll appear, appear in front of a judge and because the way the bail reform law is written, the judge has to let them go. And, and sometimes I feel that some of these people that are being let out should not be let out. Uh, every month, the commissioners get a report. It's called the Superior Court Report from, uh, the Department of Corrections. And it lists all of the inmates in there, what they're in for, whether they're being held pre-trial or whether they've been sentenced. So again, so our, our, our inmate population is going up a little bit now since, uh, the COVID thing has, uh, reduced a little bit and the courts have been a little bit more active in the last four or five months. But, uh, we still don't have, you know, the, uh, same census that we've had prior to, you know, March of twenty-twenty. So, uh, one of the, the, one of the great things about having the farm and why this is so important that we have the farm is because it provides some employment training for a lot of these, uh, inmates from the Department of Corrections. In fact, I was talking with a young person, uh, over the weekend at, at one of the local farmer's markets. And he told me that he had learned some of his skills in agriculture, not by being an inmate in the House of Correction, but by being involved with the alternative sentencing program up there at Grafton County. So, uh, you know, I'm very pleased with what our county farm does. And I ha- I did introduce a, uh, proposed, uh, plan of action called Farm Doc, Farm, Department of Corrections, to kind of, uh, develop some new ways, some new sources of income for the farm and some other things that hasn't gone very far. But, uh, it, it's, part of it is designed to really work with these inmates so that when they're done serving their time and they go back home, you know, they're going to maybe find a job, uh, you know, uh, working in the restaurant business or, or, you know, growing gardens at their home, you know, taking care of cows at their home. So they can feed their families a little bit better. Yeah, it may be a little bit pie in the sky, but, uh, it's something that I think we really need to consider. And the fu- that purpose of the farm is what was originally, uh, set to do when the statutes for the county operations were established back in the eighteen-seventies. We got, we got a great farm there. Commissioner Steve Taylor, who was Commissioner of Agriculture in New Hampshire here a number of years ago. He speaks very highly of our Grafton County farm operation. Dennis, uh, Dennis, uh, oh, the former, uh, president, the New Hampshire Farm Bureau Federation, Dennis Ward. He thinks very, very highly of our county farm operation because of, there's so many things that it can do when properly managed. And that's what we need. We need a, we need a little bit better manager there. And we've got this opportunity to bring in a new manager. Any other questions?
Do you still have a dairy operation?
Oh, yes, we do. Oh, oh, Mr., Mr. MacGyver, I'm so glad that you asked that. And Neil and I did not talk about this before the meeting. But, uh, we're milking anywhere from seventy-two to eighty cows, uh, at a time. And, uh, we, we get a report every, every, uh, month from the farm manager. And the previous fiscal year, we brought in three hundred, the farm brought in three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just by selling milk wholesale to AgriMark. We have some of the highest quality milk produced in the state of New Hampshire, coming from the Grafton County Dairy Farm. And, uh, occasionally we can sell people a cow. Uh, we do, most of our cows are whole steens, the black and white ones. And, uh, we do have some of the brown and white cows as well. We also have pigs up there and we sell all, all of our piglets. And we have chickens, so we have chickens and eggs and, uh, these are all things that originally were designed to feed into the House of Correction and to feed into the, uh, nursing home. But because of the myriad of rules and regulations, there's a lot of things that we should be doing that we can't do right now. And so I'm trying to work with our representatives to maybe get some changes in our state laws on that.
Thank you.
But our, our dairy cows are excellent. They do a great job. The thing is, I wish we could have them, uh, spend some time outdoors. Right now, unfortunately, the way the farm, uh, buildings are set up, uh, they're, they're in the stanchions all day long. And we're trying to figure out a way to get them out for a few hours of, you know, every day in between the two milking. Right now they're milked at two o'clock in the morning and at four o'clock in the afternoon. We're trying to see if there's a different way that we can do that and get them, get them to spend a little bit more time outdoors. Because I'll tell you, the residents in the nursing home love to see the cows. They just love to see the cows. A lot of those residents in the nursing home grew up on farms. Or they, they ran, you know, they had their own farms out there. So seeing those cows out there is really a, an uplifting thing for the residents in the nursing home as well. If I'm a little excited, I'm sorry, but the, the county operations up there are, are so great and, uh, we do a lot. We, we have some outstanding staff. To see what our staff has been willing to do, working overtime, uh, wearing the masks. We did have a number of our people that would not take the vaccine. And so unfortunately, they had to be laid off. And that was very, very sad that we lost people because of that. There's a, you know, there's too many rules and regulations out there that prevent us from doing things that, uh, we, we could be doing in my estimation. So, uh, but we have some tremendous staff up there at the Grafton County home. Excellent people working in the, um, maintenance department, uh, nursing staff outstanding. Department of Corrections, those guys, those young ladies and, and men there, they're, they're working overtime, way overtime. And, you know, God bless them because of what they do for, for so many people. Well, I'm very proud of them, very, very proud of those people.
Are there unmet needs in the county that the commissioners are considering?
We have an alternative sentencing department. And the alternative sentencing department is there to provide, to provide another way to help young people or people who have been charged with a drug offense or with some other criminal offense, first-time offenders especially. And rather than put them in jail pending trial or rather than have them plead, uh, you know, guilty so that they go to jail, if they agree to be part of the alternative sentencing program, they agree, I think to, I think it's a hundred-hour program where they're going to go through intensive, uh, meetings with therapists. where they're going to go through intensive meetings with therapists and other people and to help them change their lives. And as a matter of fact, last Friday, I attended the alternative sentencing, alternative sentencing graduation. And there were five young people there. Well, one wasn't quite so young. But the stories that they tell you as to how alternative sentencing has helped them to change their attitude toward life, it's amazing. The problem is, there are people out there that want to hurt our young people. They want to sell our young people drugs, and, you know, it's people that make money off of that. And yet, I, I'm also an attorney, and I'm also a family law lawyer, and I was a guardian ad litem in the court system for years and years and years. And I look at what our young people and what our young families are put through, and we've got five young people that are getting on the right track. I think about eight months ago, I went to another alternative sentencing graduation. Again, five young people. But, you know, when you read what's going on around the nation and how many young people are getting into trouble, five coming out of the alternative sentencing program in Grafton County. You know, that's, that's not a good, it's not a good ratio. But these are the things that we can do more of. Now, one of the things that I, oh, I'm glad you brought that up too, is there's so many things that the county can do, but we've got to be careful with the money. I'm very concerned about the taxpayer dollars. And even though we had a lot of increases in expenses, fuel, the cost of food. In fact, we had one of our food suppliers tell us, I was listening to one of the cooks, and the food supplier driver said, "I can't guarantee to you," cook at this part of our facility, "that when you order something, when you order a supply of food, I can't guarantee to you that I'm going to be able to deliver that to you." Because there's a supply chain issues. So this is another thing that the commissioners have to, have to worry about. So, I forget what I was going to, the other topic I was going to bring up. But, oh, in spite of all the increase in costs, the county commissioners were able to reduce the budget. This is the second year in a row. The county commissioner's budget has resulted in, and I think if you're the financial person, you're going to see that the county tax rate went down 1.64% for the upcoming fiscal year. Last year, it went down about 0.54%. So we're cognizant of these things. There are a lot of things that can be done to, I think, to bring in new revenue to Grafton County using its farm and woodlands. We were supposed to have a timber cut last year, but because of the COVID, we didn't have that timber cut. We are going to have that timber cut in the fall or the winter in this year's fiscal, fiscal budget. So we're trying to figure out ways to do things, but, you know, we have so many traveling nurses. Every, every week, I have to sign off on every invoice that Grafton County pays. And I look at, you know, $5,000 plus to pay one employee, one traveling nurse. That, that's a lot of money. And, but again, we're blessed to have some very dedicated employees at Grafton County who are willing to stand up and do the right thing. Anything else? And I'm only a telephone call away, and I'm only an email away. And my phone number is, and I don't have a cell phone, because we don't have cell service in my part of Wentworth. 764-6024, 764-6024. And you folks, select board here in Plymouth, thank you for your service. I know it's not easy. I was a selectman for two years up in Wentworth. And thank you for what you ladies do, and thank you for what you gentlemen do.
Thank you.
And take care.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the detailed report. June, do you want to talk to us about Railroad Square and the downtown drainage project? Two distinctly different, but somewhat geographically related projects.
I guess I'm here tonight because Anne said that you wanted to ask me some questions or had, you know, had some conversation last meeting about the Railroad Square area in relationship to the downtown drainage project.
Less specifically in relation to it, but sort of conceptually adjacent.
June, I'm sorry, can I have you move closer to the mic? Thank you.
She's really protecting me from Colleen at this point.
That's right.
I appreciate it.
I can go stand over there.
Yeah, she knows where I live. She'll, she'll track me down.
So I guess I had a, I wasn't quite sure what you were asking for, because I wasn't at the last meeting. So my understanding was there was discussion about using sort of that Railroad Square down by the skate park as kind of a bypass perhaps for downtown during the construction.
Yes, so long, long-term, we've been talking, and actually, if Frank has any input on this at any point, we would love to hear from you. But we've been talking as a town for a long time about doing something in the Railroad Square area. You know, how do we establish an alternative traffic path? How do we, you know, how do we help develop another potential small corridor for business? For, you know, all these sorts of things. We've talked about this area for a long time. And it's, it always gets blocked by something. It seems like something always gets in our way. And so Frank had come last week and said he'd done a little bit of research. He, he was interested in seeing us make some movement there. Pretty much everyone on the board was like, yeah, we're also interested in seeing something happen in the Railroad Square area. And the only aspect where it kind of applied to the drainage project is, is somebody, it might have even been me, but somebody said, "If we had Railroad Square open, boy, wouldn't that relieve some of the pressure off of Main Street during a, you know, multi-year Main Street project, South Main Street project?" Now, not saying any of that necessarily would come together in that sort of timeline. But then we were like, well, what's the next step? How do we get any motion? How do we move anything in Railroad Square? And it may have been Anne who said, "Well, let's get June into the conversation." So she knows that we care about Railroad Square, and we want to see some motion there. So I don't, I don't mean to confuse it with the drainage project. That is only kind of tangential, because, hey, if all of a sudden something magical happened there, boy, it would relieve some pressure. But, but I understand there's, especially when dealing with grants, there's complexity of like, let's not explode that project. But we are interested in Railroad Square.
Sure.
Is there anything we can do? How would we move further conversation? What, what might be even a baby step?
Well, I try, in the memo, I, you know, outline, I'm very much aware that since mid-2000s, the town had gotten community development block grant funds. I actually remember writing the grant application, and we worked with an engineering firm. It wasn't KV Partners at the time. It was SEA Consultants. So we have downstairs multiple, you know, I've got a copy of the report that they did. At the time when it was being worked on, there was a lot of emphasis on parking for obvious reasons, and parking garage, and trying to develop, you know, a roadway down through behind, behind Main Street, kind of below Main Street. And, you know, I think, so, you know, almost 20 years, that's certainly been an item of discussion. It's in the town's master plan, so it's very much there. How do we move it forward? You know, since I came back in January of 2021, and then that spring, we saw an opportunity with Northern Border Region Commission with, because there was no match required due to COVID. We did submit a grant application, but we were limited to the amount we could apply for. So we kept it under the, I think it was a half, I don't remember all the details, but I think it was up to about half a million or so we could apply for, which we did. It was just over 400,000 in our cost estimate at that point for only a small section of the drainage and doing some preliminary design for the roadway through there. You know, we were at 400,000. That didn't construct a roadway through there.
Right.
It doesn't require an easement through that. There's a very complex ownership and history down there, is my understanding. Anytime you're doing work in a railroad area, there's potential for environmental concerns. That's kind of a red flag for any environmental review. So to actually, you know, take the next step, we have a concept feasibility kind of study from 2005, 2006. What's happened between now and 2021, I don't know. But then, you know, how do we move that forward? It's in the master plan. It's about trying to find the right opportunity to do that. We are working on the capital improvement plan. We could put a placeholder in there for the next step of, we have a rough cost estimate of some, at least preliminary engineering. Some of this was for actual drainage work, so we could put in a number for kind of, you know, what would be that next step? And once we have that, then it also will allow us to look for other grant opportunities. But keep in mind, if we, we're going to be talking millions, you know, for a road through there. So you're going to need to get some federal assistance, whether it's another economic development agency. You know, because it has a strong economic tie, that would probably be a good infrastructure kind of place to work, look towards. But we got it, we already have a grant of 2.7. It's going to take a couple of years. So it's a few years out, probably. We can start asking them, can we apply again, you know, but...
Is there anything we can do to square away easements or ownership to get that, you know, that red flag clear in advance, or no?
So the problem when you, well, not a problem, the, the step-by-step process when you're working with federal funding is you first have to do preliminary engineering to kind of decide, hey, this is where the road should go, all right? So basically, some preliminary design work, put some lines on a map, and look at topo and wetlands and other sort of general site characteristics. Then you have to do the, for the NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, do all the environmental review, and that looks at alternatives. So one alternative is always no action. Another one would be put the road here. Another one might be move it over here to avoid this wetland, and we'll have it over here to avoid this contaminated soil due to railroad concerns, you know? So you can't do right-of-way work until you know where the road's going. And you can't know where the road's going...
So you do the preliminary.
Till you do the preliminary and the environmental design, because somebody in the scoping process, they call it, the public input process on environmental review, might say, hey, there's an endangered, you know, something, or there's a wetlands you missed. And, you know, maybe it would be better to put it here because of my knowledge of the soils there, you know? And so you may have an alternative that emerges in that process. You know, if you have good design and, you know, an environmental review analysis, it's going to pick up on that. But you always have alternatives to consider. So once you pick the alternative, then you know where your pathway is going, then you start the right-of-way.
And you start that right-of-way process.
I mean, we certainly have had conversations, and I think it would be, but there's complexities in some areas in there that I, you know, there's been a lot of survey work that French Land Services has done. We've got copies of that, that, you know, landowners that have done that have given, you know, I haven't, I don't know where they came from, but they're in the files down there. Old properties like that with railroads and multi, you know, it's kind of weird who, it's not just like a straight, normal street layout down there and property layout.
Right.
So that's my recommendation in getting it, you know, it's kind of step by step. But, you know, the federal agencies are going to want to see, you know, the feasibility study. It's in the master plan. One, all the road projects, every, or, you know, any, you know, capital improvement projects for anything in town needs to be on the CIP. Then there's sort of this plan of what are the priorities? So I guess I, you know, while on one hand, I see it's a strong priority, and it should probably have some sort of a placeholder on the CIP, at least for the next phase, to get some maybe updated public input and concept and, you know, maybe a new feasibility study or something we could do for a small amount of money to show interest to then move it to the next, the next phase of the preliminary design, that kind of thing. But I think you have to realize it's...
So is that what you'd, that's what you would recommend, is put something into the CIP?
Probably putting something in the CIP, yep, which I was planning to do.
Do like a feasibility study? Is that the right level?
A placeholder, yeah, but I think we also have to balance it again. When we've been working on some road, road issues, and it's, there's going to have some, some numbers in there if we want to, you know, work on improving our current roads too. So it's a balance of like what, you know, what all the needs are and looking at that kind of in the whole plan. So we're getting there, and that's sort of, you know, there's sort of the spatial planning, the environmental planning, the transportation planning, the economic planning. But you got to combine that with, you know, financial planning and sort of timeline of what are the priorities. And that's really for you guys and the, you know, the voters to decide too, so, or help us decide.
Help us decide, yeah.
So is that how, I mean, I've got lots of stuff in my office about it. We're certainly aware, and like I said, I mean, a few months after being here, we've got the Northern Borders Grant. It didn't get funded. It was very competitive, but it was worth it. It was a lot of work, but we, it was worth a shot. So we also could, you know, we have some text and description and stuff to work with for the next time around too.
Yeah.
So I think once we have everything bundled, the next step is also to start talking to Rural Development, EDA again, you know? Doing a good job on our current EDA-funded project is also going to be important.
It's going to be an important step in getting...
Meaning trust with them and just getting to know them, and, but, you know, costs are going up and everything's competitive too, so we, we, but we need to keep trying and having, you know, good new efforts, so.
Sounds good. Frank, did you want to put any two, did I miss anything? Did I miss any context?
Just one comment I would make is a lot of this is outlined in the 1991, 95 Green Street Program Plan. And there were three alternatives that were identified as far as what the town planner has just spoken to. And there were reasons for the choice that was selected. But the process of moving forward obviously has to come from the selectmen's office, you know, as a town, and moving forward with it. But I have a lot of information that I'll get with the town planner and see if that would help with her information that she also has as to being able to put together an executive brief on what has happened and where we could make some movement on it.
That's great. As always, community advocacy helps us to keep it forefront of mind. Thanks, Frank. Any other questions for June about this project?
Not at present.
Okay. Do you want the update on...
Yes, I would love the update on the downtown drainage project while we have your attention.
Well, it's been a busy day.
Hot off the presses, kind of?
Yeah. There had been another further delay with, as I understand it, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer needing to get final approval from their funding agency, Rural Development, for their project. They had a last-minute glitch about some legal aspect, but it's been solved as of, I guess it was Friday. I took a vacation day Friday. So today, we got together on a Zoom call at 11:00 this morning with Water and Sewer and their engineers. And of course, our engineer's on vacation, so we got, we've got a backup plan, don't worry. So anyways, we've got everything worked out for the advertisements. I ended up taking the responsibility for contacting the union leader just to get, make sure it got done. And so I did that, talked to somebody this afternoon and got information from Wright Pierce. And so I just, right before coming up here, sent an advertisement for bids to the union leader for both projects. So what we're going to do is put them, they're two separate projects, two separate fundraising, but we found a way that they will at least run them hopefully side by side in the newspaper. So I've already talked to Dan. We've got a game plan for getting this on the town's website. So it looks like we'll be able to get that ad kind of really going live on Thursday, because the union leader needs a couple of days to print the ad, prepare it and all. So the goal is, and then it gets posted, the plan set gets in project manual. For the Towns Project gets posted through HEB Engineers, and Wright Pierce handles Water and Sewer, so there's clearly links about where to go for that information. And the reason for that is any bidders need to formally request a copy of the plan set so that they know that they're getting a complete set, so they get that from HEB. They track who requests it and who they send it to. We will be getting a paper copy here in the office. Somebody wants to look at it. But most cases, they're just, everything's digital now. It also gets posted what they call plan rooms. There's some companies out there that gather up these. I mean, these are big projects, so they'll all kind of hit, hit out there hopefully on Thursday. So right now, there's a pre-construct, pre-bid meeting, excuse me, for 10:00 on August 17th. And the bid opening, bids are due to the town for the Towns Project at noon. And then we're taking them up to Water and Sewer at one, oh, sorry, on September 15th, I apologize. September 15th, and then we open them at 1:00 for a formal bid opening for both projects at the same time. So that's, yeah, and then there'll be about 30 days with a lot, I think, for HEB to do and for us to do. I've been starting to look at what the legal requirements are from EDA of, you know, there's another whole bunch of forms to fill out to certify this and that. And I think town's attorney has to review the bid once we know, once we identify the low bidder, making sure everything's there, and hopefully, it's all within our budget and doable. So you'll be hearing more at that, you know, after the 15th, some updates on where we are cost-wise with it and how we do with the two projects, and hopefully, we'll have... and how we do with the two projects, and hopefully we'll have good bidding on that. And, you know, they could, so the notice to proceed was estimated, I think, from HEB to be around October, um, third, but it, that's an S, that's an expected date. That doesn't mean the contractor has to start by that date. They have, by, per our EDA extension, they have to, they have to start, um, prior to May eighth, twenty twenty-three. So whether the contractor decides to do something this fall or wait till spring, that'll be totally up to them and working it out with HEB and the town, but meeting in our EDA requirements too, so.
Well, that's a huge milestone to get the, the bid out.
Yeah, it just happened like at five o'clock, so.
So good.
You know where their designated layout yard will, will be?
So as HEB's explained, the, um, we, the town is not taking, does not take responsibility for figuring that out. That's something the contractor will have to figure out, um, and that will be part of their bid process, is my assumption. So they might, they will probably be talking to some landowners and property owners and, you know, in the project area to figure out where they can fit.
That's something they could do this fall.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, but again, they, they have to identify that and make that part of their cost, their bid package too, so. You know, I would encourage you guys, I mean, I have the draft set, and we do have a full digital set, for you guys to really look through the two-hundred-and-eleven-page project manual. It's about thirty-some-odd pages of a plan set, um, and, you know, there's a lot in there, and then also the, the, um, some other information of how they, the bid items that they have in there, in the bid thing, you know, so they give a unit price for each item and how HEB lays it out. It's pretty, very specific and all the federal requirements, just so you have a sense of it, you know?
Are we able to get a digital copy of that?
Yeah, I have, it's, it's a little bit big to email to you, but I can put it in a SharePoint or LinkedIn, send it, send it to you, just so you have it, and...
I think that would be great.
The only thing is make sure you're not passing it on to a contractor.
Distribute it, yes.
Well, it's public information, but, again, bidders, this is, you know...
Bidders need to get it through a formal process, so it's all tracked.
They need to get it through a formal process, and any serious contractor, you know, would, the, the scope would know that too, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and then there's all, they have to do a bid bond and a, you know, certainly all kinds of, um, construction bonds and that sort of thing too, that are all part of that, whatever the, I don't remember what all the limits are, to be honest, I didn't pay attention to all those details.
Tracking enough details, that's fine.
So, we're getting there, finally.
Yeah, that's great news.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Any other questions for June?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good rest of the meeting.
Well, let's have Jim come for his last section of items. You got five though, five items, Jim.
Five?
Mm-hmm.
You're ambitious.
Hazardous Waste Day.
Yes, that will be on September the twenty-fourth. And we deal with seventeen communities that day, why we are open to the public. I would like to close from eight to twelve to the public and just have it for Hazardous Waste Day only, for just the people bringing hazardous waste in.
This is on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, yep.
Yes. And it's just, we did, I think, three hundred units last year, and we had a line waiting for people that, just to throw their trash away. We don't have the room to, you go here and then back out into traffic, people waiting for hazardous waste.
They're set up down back.
They're set up down back, so that, you know, they're holding up that line. And all these other towns aren't coming there to throw their trash away, they're coming there for that. You know, this is open to all these residents.
Yep.
Plus, the town of Plymouth bringing their trash in. So, I would like to have it closed from eight to twelve, or twelve-thirty, once they get cleaned up.
Are we, are we gonna have signage ahead of time to let residents know?
Yeah, I'll print fires out and hand them out, we can leave some here, but we've got two months.
Yep. Yeah, you got a good amount of time to communicate that closed, yeah.
I'd rather, I'd like, if possible, we could close that, for that.
What do you do if someone shows up, a truck full of trash and gets in line and gets all the way up to the building?
We'll have somebody at the gate.
Oh, have somebody at the gate, okay.
Have somebody at the gate.
Okay.
Just say, come back.
I was just thinking, once you get up there.
Or come back at one.
Yeah, come back a little bit.
Come back up to the public.
Yep.
And it, last year was my first year, and I went, I don't know how you guys ever did this.
It's a madhouse.
It's that, and it's a safety issue too, if something ever happened, you know? They can't get back to the hazardous people, because there's a line down to the gate.
No, I like the idea of stopping them at the gate.
At, yeah, at the gate with trash, come back when we're open, or come back tomorrow.
Yep, yeah, come back, back this afternoon or tomorrow, I like, yeah, I like it a lot.
I mean, if, if, if this was this weekend, no, it wouldn't work, but...
Wouldn't work, but we're, yeah, we're two months out, you've got plenty of time to communicate it.
I would like to see if the boards are right, just...
Yeah, can we get it on PVTV and get it on, you have something, can, can we get something printed that's large enough to end up post at the gate ahead of time, like a, a week or two? I mean, a small sign like that might not be visible, but if we can get a laminated poster or something like...
Is that something we could use every year, maybe make this in every year?
Yeah, don't put the, don't put the year on it or the date, don't put the date.
Just closed for, maybe we can write it on.
Yeah, or, or tape something.
Or tape something on it.
Where you put the date on, yeah, that would make sense.
Every year, we can reuse that, from here on out, this is, and now, the first year, they'll, oh yeah, they're closed until one or whatever we decide.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
I, I like all of that, it's good foresight. Any objection, Neil?
No.
I think we're good then. Need a vote on that? Nah. Consensus, consensus of the board is that you'll be closed the morning, uh, of September twenty-fourth, Hazardous Waste Day, and, uh, open back up in the afternoon.
Close for trash.
Close for trash, right, 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 open, open for the hazardous waste only.
Yeah.
Great. Closure of recycling center generator.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
I don't know, neither.
I didn't, I, I saw that and I said, I don't know what that is.
We don't know what that is, but we'll bring it back if we need to.
Is there a generator up there?
There's one out in a storage container, it's been there. Way before, I think it comes from the fire department.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Old generator, did you guys just have an old generator?
It's been many over the years.
Like I said, there, it's a generator down there, but it's way back in a trailer, so I don't know what that...
Huh.
It should be started up and tested.
There's a date here though, I wonder what that did?
Yeah.
I'm assuming, if, you're the only, between you and Kathy and Ann, you're the only ones who would know why it was there, so.
Yeah, I don't know why, that's on...
I like it, okay, so downtown trash receptacles.
Yes. We go down in the summer and pick those up every day, six days a week. And it's getting to the point now that they're being abused. People are throwing particle board stuff in there, their shoes, I mean, it's just random stuff. And we spent a thousand dollars just in trash bags last year to pick up Main Street, and two guys gotta go down there six days a week. And it's just, I mean, people are unloading their cars and we're picking that stuff up. You know, the common, we're not there on Monday, and that place is a disaster from Sunday to Monday. And Tuesday, when we go there, it's usually in the summertime, it's not very good. And there's just food, it's, we gotta do something, either put more on or take them all off. I live in Lincoln Woodstock, and there's not a single trash can on Main Street, of both towns. And we have three parks, that there's never any trash, and there's not trash on Main Street. And it's just, it's getting out of hand, I rode through tonight and it's overflowed. Six out of ten, we pick up every day. Sometimes we get called to go down twice a day.
Right, sometimes you have to do a afternoon pickup.
And they get overturned in the wintertime, in the fall, when the kids are here. They dip them over on Main Street, so we're picking flowers up and picking trash up. And if they get too full, they'll just throw the trash on the side. And it's just, you know, it's getting tough, you know, every day we've gotta go down there for at least forty-five minutes. If they're that bad, you know, because they're gonna go all the way around and stop check every one of them.
So you're proposing taking them out?
I would not be against that. I'm not, I wouldn't do it now, I'd go the rest of the summer and say, hey, this is at the end of the year, and you're gonna have no trash cans on Main Street.
I, I think that we should have Mary Ann here, at least as a downtown business owner to kind of...
I mean, I'd be curious to hear what others think too, but, um, do we know of any other communities who had trash cans in their downtown and then removed them, is there any?
I can look into it, but...
Trying to think which other towns are of similar size.
I was in Littleton today, and there was not a trash can.
Littleton, they don't have any trash cans in Littleton?
Ashland doesn't have them either, I don't believe.
Said Lincoln and Woodstock, there's not a trash can.
Ashland doesn't even have a trash can, like at the, at the rec area, where the, just trying to think.
For the beach, I mean, the, um, the park?
Where they play basketball, tennis, basketball, baseball field.
I don't think there is.
I don't know. It, it's like, you know, the beaches probably carry, yeah.
It's one of those things also, you don't, unless they're a problem, you don't see trash cans, you know what I mean, you don't, at least we don't.
Some of the items, though, are coming from not just people walking by. They could be coming from the businesses along Main Street.
Right, absolutely.
Could be coming from the tenants.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure, like, like Eminem Scoops probably produces a, a good amount of trash in those trash cans, because people get a bowl of ice cream or an ice cream cone and sit.
It could also be those businesses potentially could be put in their trash.
Oh, I was thinking of it less maliciously, which...
With pizza boxes and, you know, it's just...
But a pizza box, again, you go into, you know, into the pizza place, you do a takeout, you go sit on the common, eat the pizza, and then throw the box in the trash can, that, that's not an unreasonable use case. I understand how it can fill up the trash can pretty fast, though.
Fills up the trash can, and then people are cleaning their cars up, you know? Is there, there's not a Starbucks in Plymouth, there's not a Wendy's, there's, you know, it's just beer cans, a pile of beer cans in these trash cans, you know? I don't think, that our department should be picking up people's car trash, they're cleaning their car up.
We have the same issue at Crystal Spring, back when we had a, we had a container there for years, and people were using, they were bringing their household trash, and we had, I think you guys were picking it up.
Yeah.
We had to get rid of it.
So you got rid, this is a case where we did get rid of something, and what was the after effect?
Um, actually, somebody puts a bag up on the fence, if you, I don't know why you are there and have a need for trash can, but somebody takes care of it, I haven't seen, you know, litter there.
Really, somebody puts a trash bag up there?
Yep.
Huh.
But there was a lot of that ugly stuff being left there.
I believe it.
If the thing was faulty, throw like a, I remember a dirty diaper over the fence into the containment, containment area, why? You get the free water.
Right, exactly.
That's the good drinking water.
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's a, it's an interesting one to consider. I'd like to have a little bit more full board to make that one, because it's a...
So maybe we can bring...
It's one of those that will probably get a lot of heat for the first six months, and then it would go away if we made such a decision. Unless, of course, the streets end up covered in trash, and then we'll all get...
I think if you did it like at the end of the summer,
Yeah.
where there's not much foot traffic in the wintertime, then they'll get used to not...
Just used to them not being there.
Used to them being there. I wouldn't do it May first and say, we're getting rid of your trash cans in June, if you...
If you, if you kind of phase it out as part of entry into fall.
Yeah. And there even, sometimes in the wintertime, they've had.
Do you think we'd have to have a public hearing on that one?
If you have to the board.
I mean, I don't think legally we do, it's a question of, and...
Well, maybe legally we don't.
No, I'd be very interested to hear more feedback from the downtown businesses, you know?
We'll put that on the agenda, and it is, um, eight-twenty-two, not eight-twenty-nine, or twenty-six.
Even though that's what it says here?
Even though what it says here, it shouldn't be the twenty-second.
I will, we'll adjust what was said earlier.
So we'll come back on the twenty-second?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Love it.
Yeah, and maybe we can, um, eh, if we could just, if someone doesn't see Mary Ann before the next time we meet, if you all could just ask her to send a note to the downtown businesses that we're gonna be discussing that item? Would be nice to have a couple of them come in and give their opinion
Interested parties, yeah.
Before it's a highly contested topic. But yeah, I mean, if, if we're seeing a lot of that kind of misuse... Yeah, interesting. Anymore on downtown trash for the twenty-second? Uh, mattresses, and the out-of-town price increase item here.
That was, I believe, Jesse proposed this before he left for eighty dollars, a mattress?
Somewhat, it's been, it's, it's, it's been taken around the corner a few times. So the, the way this, we discussed it, he was very concerned about, um, in particular, uh, furniture stores and things, who, who are bringing mattresses in large quantities to the recycling center. And his big concern was a furniture store who takes in a mattress from someone who doesn't even live in Plymouth, right? And then they bring it to the recycling center, and, and that, that particular niche. I, I know there was some discussion, and I would love to hear your, your perspective around our license and its ability to take trash from people who don't reside in town.
Me personally, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, uh, whether it's a good idea or not, it's certainly debatable, but Jesse seemed to indicate that we weren't even legally allowed to take our license.
You're not, we can, it has, our license is what's generated in the town of Plymouth. Whether their businesses in the town of Plymouth, they can't go get a mattress from Lincoln and bring it. Just because they sold one in Plymouth, they can't bring that one from Lincoln to drop it off in Plymouth. Has to be generated in the town of Plymouth.
So even though they, as a business, they take possession of it, they now own that piece of trash, they can't bring it here?
It wasn't generated, it's gotta be generated in this town.
So then we can't put an eight, eighty-dollar fee on a mattress that was generated out of town when our license doesn't even allow us to take it?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question, because Jenny, uh, Jesse had described the situation with the license, and then this came in front of us, which was to add an eighty-dollar fee. It says, "Select Board has decided to increase the cost to all commercial and nonprofit entities that deliver mattresses to the Plymouth Recycling Center from other towns at the rate of eighty dollars per mattress." And my understanding was, we weren't even illegally allowed to do that.
Correct. You can't even take stuff from out of town.
So we couldn't knowingly, I mean, we can unknowingly take stuff from out of town, obviously, but we couldn't knowingly say, oh, you're bringing this from out of town, well, you gotta pay us eighty dollars.
And I, and I can't take it.
You can't take it.
If I know you're coming from Thornton, sorry.
Right.
And I can tell you since this come out, our mattresses have decreased
Okay.
from furniture companies.
So, that's interesting, um...
This letter has already gone out.
This letter has already gone out.
Where do you think your mattresses are going?
They're probably going to their rightful facilities.
Town they're from.
Yeah, 'cause...
So this letter go out with, uh, with four out of five signatures on it? Okay.
So, yeah, we can't take stuff from out of town.
So it's nice that we sent a letter, nothing about this letter is in the least bit enforceable.
It is if it's coming from out of town.
No, it's not, because this letter says you're gonna charge them eighty dollars.
Yeah, I'm, I didn't write this letter.
And I, and I am the only person who didn't sign it. Um, okay.
They don't wanna pay the eighty dollars.
So, I suppose we've, we've achieved the goal that we set forth to achieve.
Even though we can't enforce it.
Okay, so we don't need to add an additional fee? We're not gonna vote on adding an additional fee, we have sent a letter, and we should just put this to rest.
Yes.
Yes?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
Although I do see that we have the schedule of fees here.
That's on the list, that's next?
That's next.
Yes, yes, but I don't see mattresses listed, oh, yeah, there it is, nevermind. Maybe we should just make that a big... Maybe we should just make that a big number.
With mattresses, five to fifteen dollars, yeah.
Can I discuss that?
Yes, let's move on to the overall discussion of the fee schedule that's for residents.
It's, the mattress, for us to get rid of one mattress is thirty dollars.
Okay.
No matter the size.
No matter the size.
So it doesn't seem like we should charge less than thirty dollars?
No.
No, that's kind of where I was going.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have the, like, we, we're not taking anything from out of town.
Yep.
So that, we've discussed that, but I think you should go up to at least thirty, thirty-five. You know, cause.
The five dollars gives us a little bit of a processing fee on it.
And I think hauling's going up.
Yeah, oh, that's true, so some of these things really.
Some of that, it's not just the mattresses.
Right.
It's your, your C and D. It's that five cents a pound, shingles are ten cents, well, shingles just go out back in a pile, that, but our C and D goes into the can.
Yep. So, why do you say mattresses cost us thirty? Where do you come with that number? Is that based on the weight?
Comes right from Casella.
Cause they have a special fee.
Casella has a special fee for mattresses?
Set fee for one mattress is thirty dollars.
Those don't go in the, in the crusher?
No, we have a container out back.
Gotcha.
But that's thirty dollars a mattress, plus the haul charge.
Is there anything else you're aware of on this list that we should increase or change the price on?
Well, if they renew the contract, we're gonna have to look at maybe upping the price for C and D.
So everything else that's on here, Jim, is in um, is in compliance of what we pay?
Yes.
Okay.
So construction debris, that goes in the, the hauling fees we just discussed and we pay. Shingles just stay, we hold them on site, eventually we'll have to deal with them, but right now.
Eventually have to deal with it.
Eventually we'll have to deal with them. What's white goods?
Uh, refrigerators, washer dryer, hot water heaters. But all that.
Five dollars still reasonable there?
Yeah, cause after we get to five dollars, we put it in our scrap steel pile.
And then we get money off the scrap steel?
Yeah.
Okay, so five dollars is, is mostly just the convenience handling for us. Fifteen on white goods with refrigerant?
Yes, cause we.
Cause you have to bleed it off.
We don't, we have a company do it and it's only nine dollars a unit.
So it's nine dollars to bleed it off, it's similar situation then at that point where it's about five dollars for the handling fee.
Yeah, in our, we dismantle our air conditioners, so we take all the copper out, the radiators out. Then we put the rest of it up in the scrap steel. So refrigerators will go to the scrap steel too after we've.
Gotten the high, high value pieces out of it.
Yeah, and refrigerants out of them.
So tires you've got in here from two dollars all the way up to thirteen if you've got truck tires.
Yeah.
Still reasonable.
Yeah.
That price. Uh, stuffed furniture, this has gotta be couches and chairs and things, five to ten?
Five to ten, yeah.
Still fair?
If it's a pullout couch.
It's got a mattress in it, so you charge the mattress fee.
So we should probably go up to thirty on those, or thirty-five because.
That's not explicitly here though, is it?
No, no, it's not dis, it's not distinguished.
You're just charging the mattress price on a pullout.
Yeah.
So that, you could just do that same thing that you're doing now, if we brought that up to thirty-five. Weight certifications, five dollars. Propane tanks, five to ten. Televisions, less than twenty-five, ten.
Was that, the televisions assuming, going back in history of CRTs. Is there a reason why today with them being flat panels and less bulky? That they cost that much, or they, should they be considered more like electronics?
No, cause they still have to process, there's still some motherboard and stuff they gotta process and then flat screens.
Yeah.
So they still have to dismantle them.
So they, are we paying, we pay for those on a per item basis, is that?
Our haul to get rid of TVs is eight hundred and fifty bucks. And that, they just go into a container.
Those all just go to a container, so.
We've got a.
When the container's full, you.
Full.
They're a little bit less bulky, but the haul weight on the container is probably a bit of a wash.
That's a straight fee.
Oh, it's just eight?
Eight.
Eight fifty, yeah. So the small printers, large printers, all that stuff is all just going in that same container?
Same container.
Okay, makes sense. Sinks and toilets are five dollars. Fiberglass units are five dollars. Large fiberglass fifteen, wooden furniture, five cents a pound.
Yeah.
That all makes sense still, that's all fair. So we're probably just looking for a motion on the mattress box spring.
The box springs not so much, cause we put them right in our hopper. We can crush them up and they just go in our hopper.
We charge a fee on box springs, or we just take them?
Five.
So we should line item that out as five and the mattress as thirty-five?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so.
I mean.
Yeah.
Why are we paying fifteen extra dollars to get rid of them with not being?
Yeah, no, I agree. Alright, I will make a motion that we adjust the fee schedule on. Uh, the mattress and box spring as discussed.
Five dollars for box spring, thirty-five for mattresses.
Five dollars for box springs, thirty-five for mattresses.
Neil?
That's the only change you're making? A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Wonderful.
We'll talk to you about this tomorrow.
Anything else while you have our attention?
No, I think I'm good right now. I think I've.
Successful.
Eased into the first meeting.
Now run.
There's usually not this much for, uh, for recycling. We're always happy to talk to you.
Just think there's some stuff that needed to be addressed.
Absolutely. No, 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 not, that wasn't criticism.
No, no, I just.
Thank you.
Equipment's running well?
Yep. Brown. Knock on wood.
That's good, and you're fully staffed? Well, I mean, you're down Jesse, but.
Yeah, but we're looking for a part timer.
Oh, you are still looking for a part timer, yeah.
Good luck, Ray.
Good luck. I live Lincoln and they've had a highway department opening for three months. Not one single application. Full time.
It's brutal. That's brutal. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, now Ted is gonna talk about some data from the fire department.
Yep, some exciting data. I, I did, I did PowerPoint again, so I can make it easier. Go into slideshow so it's even bigger.
No, do you have these?
I was gonna say, Neil and I, we're out of luck here.
Yeah, I don't know.
I need binoculars.
It's the same data that's here on this.
Yeah, it's just in PowerPoint format.
Is this the last apartment you're doing?
Uh, I believe so.
I believe so as well.
So, um, going through the data, um, that we collected. Now there, I'm gonna make a comment about the Keen data. Any data from Keen. Based on the number of calls specifically is suspect. We don't really have. A good breakdown in terms of, there seems to be some disagreement between the data that Kathy had given me. And that Tom was able to procure, but even then, it wasn't broken down by ambulance versus fire, so. So anything based on number of calls for Keen, just kind of put aside for the moment.
Put a big old asterisk right on Keen.
So, yeah, it, it, it's enough of an outlier where I don't think it's relevant to the discussion. So the first slide we're gonna cover is ambulance calls for service. So we have a number of towns. Um, the low is obviously from the, the chart, New London. And the high excluding Keen is Guilford. And what you'll see here. Is that Plymouth is fairly comparable to Guilford, uh, in terms of total number of ambulance calls. And, and so I actually have the, the real data for Plymouth. Um, ambulance calls for service is thirteen hundred and fifteen. And Guilford came in at thirteen hundred and forty-two. So, they're fairly comparable in total number. Um, the low, New London was two hundred and fifty-seven. So it just gives you a relative spread. Unfortunately, because Keen's data is so disproportionate. It stretches the scale, so it's kind of hard to tell the details. So it looks like, you know, at least for Plymouth, in total number of ambulance calls, it looks like we're on the high end of the total equation.
Is this for all towns or just calls within Plymouth?
I only have.
That's our total EMS call.
Total for all community service.
When you service surrounding towns as well.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, if we need, if we wanted to be more granular, we'd need to verify that those other towns in this thing. Don't have combined data too, which.
Right.
Right now, I don't think we have that granularity.
You and I discussed that, I mean, that so many of these communities operate differently, i.e. they have a private ambulance service. Or they're a combination department like us, or it's a totally separate entity.
Uh, next slide here is total calls for service, and this would obviously include fire. And again, because Keen is a little bit weird. Um, it's, it stretches that, um, that graph. But, you know, obviously here, uh, Plymouth is a little more, more central, um, below two thousand. So for total calls, um, Plymouth is at eighteen thirty-four. And to kind of put in perspective, I'll choose one that's next to it. I'll, we'll pick on Guilford here. Guilford is seventeen thirty, sixty-three. And you can see Durham, which is honestly a, a significantly larger population, relatively speaking. Um, is only two thousand and twenty-four, so there's. We are certainly doing a lot more total calls than Durham is. But Durham, I think, the campus of Durham has its own fire department, correct?
So Durham has a first.
Go ahead.
Uh, Durham has a first responder.
Uh, Teddy, she, can you, can you come to a mic?
I'll stand up here.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, so Durham does have a first responder ambulance service essentially. Um, they have, it's like a, they call it a fast squad. So, they'll send EMTs and, um, fire department people out. To do first response, and then they have McGregor Private EMS, who's contracted for all of Durham and several other communities. They, uh, they do the transport and major, and medical stuff. So a lot of times, if you look at Durham's numbers. Um, Durham Fire Department doesn't respond to like BLS, we call it, EMS calls, um, stuff of trips, falls, lycases, or someone.
So it's artificially low?
Yeah, so they don't, cause of the private ambulance, they don't get to have that call volume. So that's a lot of this, what you're seeing here.
Okay.
What's interesting, if I may, when you talk about Guilford, is that they do less calls with, you know, look at the number of people that they have on duty. Seven more full-time people on duty.
Yeah, they've got a huge part-time.
Yeah, we have a, we have a slide in there that kind of talks a little bit more about these.
I guess they're full-time significantly bigger too.
And, and some of, some of the departments seem to have a lot of part-time, like, uh, Peterborough has. Like seventy part-time people and one full-timer, so. Some of the, some of it is obviously pretty hard to, uh, equate to each other. So that's total calls for service. Um, this one might be a little more meaningful here is a. Total, calls per resident. So if you take the number of calls coming in. You, you kind of match that back against the, the population of the town. And it gives you a number of calls for, per resident. For Plymouth, we seem to be on the higher end of that. You know, more than point two five. The only other one that is higher is Peterborough. And you mentioned, I think, that, that they're doing a regional kind of activity.
Right, that's right.
Which might be larger than our regional one. So we have, basically, we, we, we're a little bit on the high end of the number of calls were taken per resident. Uh, fire calls per resident, specifically where we had the data, um, again, Keen is wrong. Uh, Peterborough is very high because they're doing a regional. Uh, we seem to be, Plymouth seems to be right, or is it, right in the middle of things? So, not completely unexpected. We're not really high, we're not really low, so we seem to be right where we think we would be there. Um, ambulance calls per resident, where we have it, again, uh, Keen is wrong. And Plymouth is on the higher end of that scale. Uh, fire ambulance personnel to resident ratio, so this is basically where we calculate in. The number of people responding to calls. And the metric I use is like a full-time person counted as one. Any kind of part-time counted as a half, where it might not actually equate out to that in some places, but others may. Uh, but it's the only, you know, kind of consistent metric we can apply.
And as we spoke about, even if you called it ten percent, which is probably closer to the truth, as long as it's applied across the board, that, that graph would look the same.
Yeah, it would look the same.
Yeah.
So, you know, in this situation, uh, we go from a very low number. Under two hundred for New London, up to honestly is a pretty high number. Not over nine hundred dollars, I mean, nine hundred, um, one in nine hundred. Ambulance to resident ratio, so. Either, either Sandown's really scrimping, not having enough people, or maybe our data's not quite complete. Maybe they have more part-time people than they indicated, that's indicated. But nonetheless, uh, Plymouth seems to come in at the, the lower end of the scale, you know, at. One, one person per every three hundred residents.
One of the things that Ted and I talked about is, is for us to pursue a, a common set of data points. With this, with the New Hampshire Fire Chiefs Association, and we're gonna be working on that, so that we can more easily compare each other.
Yeah, and I think, I think that makes sense.
Great idea.
And it will also help us, you know, in, in the future in terms of planning.
But interpreting this data, it doesn't look like there's any, there's nothing here where, where Plymouth feels wildly out of sync with other towns, right? There's, there isn't a data point where you're like, ah, how are we so overstaffed or understaffed or too expect? You know, we're a little on the high end, but.
We have to, we have, we have to normalize the data, get something that's more.
It's a good start though.
But it's a good start, it doesn't feel, I don't look at this and say like, wow, we really ought to dig into the fire department and figure out how they're doing such a terrible job.
I, I would be, I would be more concerned in this case if our numbers look more like New London.
Yeah.
Because New London, that suggests that they have lots of staff, but not lots of residents. That they're directly helping. So I would hope, you know, in this situation, I would hope that we would be more central. In terms of tendency in the data. Like I said, I have question about, you know, Sandown being so disproportionately higher. Like we might be missing something. Let's see, do I have any more? Um, we have a cost per resident?
Well, something on Sandown, when you look at it, they've, they've got an ambulance budget of sixty thousand dollars, but then. Your, your ambulance line says volunteer department with one full-time chief. That's gotta be, that's gotta mean they're hiring out their ambulance. That's gotta be, that's gotta mean they're hiring out their ambulance service to someone else. So their ambulance staff is not their.
It's not, yeah, it's not high. And it, it's not.
I'm sure it covers Sandown for ambulance.
But they've gotta be paying somebody to do it.
Right. And those costs, you know, we, we weren't, we didn't get those costs, right?
Yeah, they, we don't know what those are.
Somebody has a separate ambulance contract, that's not included in here.
Yep.
We could get it next time.
Yeah.
It would be interesting, I think, give a truer, complete picture.
Yeah, we, we realize that in some of the stuff, we do not have a complete picture. Um, I think this is the last slide I had, cost per resident. Sandown here is really, really cheap.
Because you got one full-time. No, that's, you're, you're saying residents.
Cost per resident, you know, because they're, they're, maybe their service didn't include all the costs.
Maybe they don't have a good service.
So we, you know, that's what we don't know.
I think we should look at too is income. And I think the police chief spoke about that two weeks ago.
Yeah, in order to have.
And that's a piece of data that we would, would have to search to get for other towns, ours we can get easily, but that would.
The revenue offset changes a lot of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, you know, something that might.
Those cross calculations, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, in this, in this, in this graph, we don't do as well, um, we are, you know, in the higher end of the tier. But we don't know why some of these other ones are disproportionately low.
Again, if we calculated the half a million that we bring in, you know, that number, that graph.
That changes the graph a lot. But we need to be, yeah, like you said.
We need to add it for the others as well.
Yep.
And then we get a truer sense. I, I think the same kind of thing applies to a lot of the other town departments, police gets some revenue, um, recycling gets some revenue. Library, not so much probably.
There's a couple of agencies, I, I mentioned to you, the Kling Report, which is very comprehensive in terms of this type of data. The problem is, a very small percentage of the departments that are requested actually submit data, cause it takes, somebody has to take time to, to submit it. So that's unfortunate, but New Hampshire Municipal also has similar data, same problem.
And, and the thing is, no one's, no one's seeing that necessarily another, a value to them to have this data. And so that's kinda where I'm hoping that if, if we kinda lead a grassroots effort to get at least some consistent data, and we can share it and say, hey, here is what you can use to tell your residents on how we're doing. And these are the towns that are participating in it, and maybe we can get more participation. Obviously, more participation means more reliable and better results can be derived from the data. That's, oh, there, there's a cost per call I had there, but again, we run into problems where, um, you know, the number of calls really offsets it a lot. That is all.
Thank you, I realize how much work you put into that, we appreciate it.
Kathy did a lot of work gathering the data, don't wanna diminish that. I only took the columns and did something.
Appreciate it. Work in progress, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I, I indicated to, um, Tom that, you know, we can use some of this preliminary work to try to work on gathering data for our initiative to assess, you know, some of the nonprofits, what their true cost, what their true contribution should be in, in, in support of the municipal services.
Yep. Makes a lot of sense to me.
And we should start on that sooner than later. Because before we know it.
Before we know it, we ready to renegotiate that contract for real.
Yes.
They were pretty clear about what their intentions were, so. Uh, great, any, any more questions for either the fire department or, or Ted? All right, that is it for new and other business, uh, committee reports. These'll be quick, cause only half of us are here. Neil, planning board.
Okay, we had a meeting on July twenty-first. We had a general discussion regarding, uh, problems with applicants, uh, getting all their information together. They're having problems with contractors, stretching out the process a little. We discussed, uh, the ten-year plan for the State Highway Department. And the, uh, um, redesign of, uh, it's twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-four. That, that's the ti- time span. And, uh, we discussed, uh, redesign of Route Three from, uh, Toby Road, uh, up to Fairgrounds Road. And, uh, uh, the intersection at Foster Street. And, uh, the, uh, there's a visibility problem, uh, going by the armory. You know, the road probably should be cut down, uh.
And a sidewalk added.
Yeah, uh, yeah, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there. And then we discussed Route Three and Twenty-Five, uh, cor- corridor plans for safety and traffic flow, pedestrians' shoulders and economics. We had a question about, uh, when, uh, Highlands, what, where Highland Street is in the schedule. It's my understanding that we have funding for Highland Street reconstruction? How far out is that?
Well, it's supposed to be coming up quickly. We still haven't had our final authorization from DOT.
Does that mean governor and council?
No.
No?
Yeah, New Hampshire Department of Transportation, they need, they need to give us the final authorization to start.
Oh, okay, so the funding has been approved.
It's been approved, we're still a ways out though.
It's, it's not gonna happen this year?
No.
Maybe next year?
Maybe.
Maybe? Okay, we, we had more, uh, uh, discussion reviewing site plan regulations and recommended changes. And, uh, we're gonna work on that, uh, August eighteenth and September seventeenth. We didn't have any applications in front of us. Yep, that's it.
Campus Community Council, been working on some dates?
Yes, well, um, how we left this last year is that, uh, there was a desire to kind of refocus this group into something that is more informational and given an opportunity to provide question and answer. So, um, Marlin had agreed to host the, the next meeting on campus and provide light refreshments. So basically, they've given us a couple of days to choose from, Tuesday, August twenty-third, or Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. Um, thinking the five to five-thirty PM start time. My feeling is we split the difference and make it five fifteen. But, you know, question to the board is, which day do we feel would be better?
Good either way.
Any other opinions? Neil?
Any opinion on Tuesday versus Wednesday?
For what?
For Campus Community Council.
Oh, I'm not involved with that. Well, you could be.
Could be.
Could be.
Wanted to attend.
If you wanted to attend.
Yeah, I've done it many times.
I'm not saying you have to, but.
When, when are they gonna meet?
Well.
The twenty-third or the twenty-fourth?
We're, we're talking about the twenty-third.
We haven't got a set time yet.
Well, they'll say five fifteen.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'm up for it.
You're, you're invited.
Okay, I'll come.
So we need to post that as a selectmen's meeting if you're.
Yeah, we'll wanna.
Get it on the website.
Meetings, if you, I think.
I think, yeah, we want it.
Probably all of us will probably be there, I mean.
Sure.
So five fifteen on the twenty.
Yeah, we'll go with five fifteen on the twenty.
Go with the twenty-third.
Twenty-third. And I need, I don't have the actual location yet. Wasn't in this, so I'll, I'll provide that as soon as.
Yeah.
So light refreshments, um, the idea here is that it would be a QAA, sixteen minutes or so long. Um, basically anybody within the community who has questions about what's going on on campus, um, specifically, uh, the plan is to have, uh, Don, the new provost, uh, Marlin, they'll present some highlights for the upcoming academic year, some key dates, events, communicate, engagement opportunities, et cetera. And, um, opportunities at the end for, uh, the audience to ask questions.
Good.
So, yeah, we will wanna get that publicized. Uh, this will be, I'm hoping will be much more than just the group of us sitting there with a group of landlords, more of the community will be involved. So, um, we need to also make sure that we're sending this out to that distribution list that we were given last year, at least as best we can to promote it, once we have the location.
Once we have the location, yeah. I wonder if we should print a, a flyer to put on the bulletin board at the recycling center as well?
Yeah, that wouldn't be bad.
High visibility location.
That's all I have on that.
High school school board?
Uh, I don't think they're meeting during the summer.
No, they don't meet during the summer. Uh, Conservation Commission, Neil?
Sure, um, we met on July nineteenth. Lisa, donor chair. We discussed, uh, permit renewal for, uh, logging on Plymouth Mountain by Greenacre Woodlands. The, uh, there's been a wetlands application approval for a development site on Yeton Road, it's a residential development site, which, uh, we had reviewed, and, uh, we gave it our approval, and then the state approved the wetlands permit.
On Yeton Road is that?
Well, um, if you come in from Tenny Mountain Highway and, uh, you just go past the substation, the pump station. It's on the right, there's a piece of land that goes back in.
It's like forty acres or something.
Deep, yeah, but they have to get across a wetland in order to access the developable land. Cause it's all wet right down in that section next to the brook.
Yep.
And, uh.
Any idea what kinda resi- what kinda development they're doing in there?
Residential.
Yeah.
House.
They didn't talk about how many units or anything?
No, I think it's, um, single-family type house.
Oh, just one house?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's not a, it's not like a multiple house development in there.
No, single-family house.
Yeah, single-family.
One owner. The, um, Conservation Commission wants to search for possible grants related to bicycles and pedestrian crossing on Tenny Mountain Highway. And, uh, the, um, they, they, uh, wanna have a multi-use pathway from Burger King to Tenny Mountain Highway, and, so that we can get the state to put in, uh, pedestrian crossing on the highway. Uh, we recognize that, uh, there's, uh, an increasing amount of pedestrian traffic out there, and it's extremely dangerous for pedestrians trying to cross the road, uh, which is happening all the time. Uh, and we just wanna, uh, try to, uh, get ahead of the, you know, possibility of somebody being seriously injured or killed. The, uh, com- count, the Conservation Commission has proposed collaborating with the town to contract a grant writer just for this project. And they need a cost estimate for the sidewalk from the town. So that, I think we've discussed that before. That they wanna get a cost estimate from the town for a sidewalk.
We might be able to take the estimates we got from the.
South Main Street?
South Main Street to figure out, you know, a per mile sidewalk estimate cost.
Use it for a, like a.
As a rough ballpark anyway.
Yeah, kinda by the, the linear feet or whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause it's gotta, gotta be, uh, handicapped, uh.
And I'm sure everything they're doing down there.
You know, all that.
In federal grant, I'm sure we're within those parameters.
The, uh, they've also acquired a GIS ProBasic user license. And, and, uh, they're working on a new website. And, uh, they are also working towards updating the natural resource inventory for the town, which is outdated. It's like seventeen years old. And, uh, we also have an invasive plant committee, uh, which is, uh, experimenting at this time, I guess it's a trial run, uh, they call it a one-two-three app on the phone. Where you, you can, if you have a smartphone, or, you know, something like that, uh, you can go to the site where you, uh, see, a particular invasive plant, you can identify it, and you can, uh, put down whether or not it's climbing a utility pole, or, uh, causing some other potential damage. And it can be, uh, put onto a map electronically. The, uh, commission voted to become the host of the invasive plant action committee for the town of Plymouth. So they've taken on that mantle.
Great.
How's that?
That was lovely.
Yeah, things are happening.
Yeah, it sounds like Conservation Commission's.
Yeah.
Got all sorts of things going on, it's awesome. Uh, capital improvement met last Thursday, I was not able to attend, and were you there for that one?
I don't think I went.
Okay. They had rescheduled it to be Thursday night at a time I was.
Fourth.
Oh, August fourth, I, why did I think it was last Thursday?
August fourth, and it's, it's like six-thirty to eight-thirty, or five-thirty to seven-thirty?
August fourth.
August fourth, yep.
So that's next week.
Yes.
Next week? Yeah, next week.
Okay.
Uh, LRPC, no news, Parks and Rec?
They are meeting next week on the third, from four to six PM, at, I'll quote, Cabbies.
Four to six?
Four to six.
Nothing for parking committee, nothing for, oh, there, no, no action, I can, I can make development. Is Grace online?
She is.
Hey, Grace, update on Energy Commission?
Hey, how are you guys doing?
Wonderful, thank you for sticking with us.
I know, thanks for making time. So, as you know, Bill's away.
I'm vacationing, and I just offered to do a quick update on the solar, um, research that we've been doing, solar site re- research. Um, so as you may recall, we chose to work with Barrington Power as a consultant, um, mostly due to a number of calling, qualifying factors that, that we felt they would be better suited to work with us on, and there were cost estimates generally for solar. Um, so what the PEC did was, we chose, we looked at all kinds of, um, qualifying, uh, town sites. And we chose, uh, seven of them to kind of look at, look at. And then Barrington Power looked at the sites a little more closely, and what we did was, we developed a spreadsheet of five sites that were kinda preferred to look at for potential solar arrays. Um, and I don't know if you got a copy of these, or if I should try and share my screen?
No, you can, you can share your screen for the TV audience, but we, uh, we have.
No, you can, you can share your screen for the TV audience, but we, uh, we have a copy.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so, and this, you know, there's nothing in stone right now. All we're still doing is, we're in the research phase. Um, Neil and Bill and I went out on some of the sites the other day just to kinda get a sense of their location, pros and cons, potential issues with other land uses. Um, and so I think this spreadsheet really shows, uh, where we are at this point with each site and its constraints and, and, uh, advantages. Um, we haven't made any decisions. We're still trying to work out costs with Barrington Power. And so I don't know if there's any questions at this point, but this is kinda where we are at this point. I think one thing, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. One thing that was really helpful today was I sat down with Barrington Power. And if you've noticed, I don't know, I'm hoping that you have column G through twelve, which further boiled down the pros and the cons.
I don't know.
We don't, we don't know the column numbers. We have site, approximate array size, anticipated generation, pros, cons, location, parcel number, and acreage.
Okay, so you don't have the latest and greatest, which I can forward to Kathy to forward to you. But, um, this morning, and I know that was kind of a last-minute, uh, task on our part, so I apologize, but we broke it down to, um, whether it was close to three-phase power, which is easier to feed onto the grid. Uh, whether there might be power usage behind the meter, um, such as maybe at the transfer station, if we were to build a array next door to the transfer station where it could actually use the power right off, um, as it was being generated. Um, another column was the amount of site work that would have to be, um, accomplished to build a, an array. Um, and then the fourth and fifth columns were civil engineering needs and permitting. Um, so, so we're kinda looking at those to kind of boil them down a little bit more because obviously, some of those things would increase the, the cost. Um, so kinda that's where we are in term, terms of the assessment of each site. And again, I can share this screen right now if you prefer, or, you know, we can just look at this later. We're not, we are not making any decisions yet, yet, obviously.
Is one of these locations starting to emerge as a, as a kind of lead candidate? Or is it still very, uh, research-based at the moment?
That's a good question. Um, I appreciate that, Zach. So the Hitchner Site is looking very, um, favorable? So if you drive down past the storage unit and the, um, I don't know what you, you would call it, the used, used appliance store, um, and go into where the Highway Department is, is, um, doing some auxiliary work in storage, the most, uh, easterly part of that lot is primed for about a three-hundred kilowatt system, uh, which is probably the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak. And it wouldn't impact what the Highway Department is using that site for. And it's close to what they call three-phase power. Um, not a lot of site work would be necessary there. Um, so that right now, it's looking favorable, but we haven't done enough research to completely light on it. Um, the other site that was a little surprising to us is we ended up like walking up on the capped landfill area. Um, and there have been like nine or ten really large solar complexes built on capped landfills. So there's a permitting process, um, that's, you know, you can navigate. And we just, we actually discovered that you could put a pretty good size array on that site up in the capped landfill, and it's got really excellent exposure. But that's just two things that were kinda like aha moments when we went out in the field with Barrington Power.
Cool. That's great.
Any other questions for right now?
No. Thank you.
No, thanks, Grace.
Yeah, we just wanted to report out, and we're gonna keep you guys in the loop as we go.
Oh, highly appreciated.
Thank you.
It's great work.
Thank you. Off I go. Thanks.
Anything from ABC?
Uh, the only thing is that we agreed that, uh, we would do the communication of the, the book as an electronic-
Oh, digital book.
So we're not going to be killing dozens of trees.
Filling the-
Per book.
Kathy and I have a meeting tomorrow, um, with Joseph. Um, and he's gonna help us create like a Google Doc like he did, um, for the C I P program. That we're gonna be able to go in and fill out their information and-
Perfect.
Backup documentation, and Ted thought that would-
That would be amazing.
I don't know what they do with the C I P.
Committee as well.
But I, I propose like using folders rather than having it in one big monolithic document.
That's fine. The, uh, the C I P, they just, each department has their own tab in the sheet, and so, it works.
That would work.
Reasonably well, too. Just one doc that way.
That's what we're hoping for, so we'll see.
Great. Love it.
Budgeting starts when, Kathy? September, October, somewhere in there? Department heads are starting to gather their information, um, through the month of August. So it would be September that everything into us.
Wonderful. Uh, any public comments?
Perlech has a meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah, we didn't get Perlech on the list still. Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
All right. That can, oh, we do have one public comment.
Did you folks get invited to the grand opening of the Little Antlers, uh, Learning Center up on, uh, Tenny Mountain Highway? Are you familiar with that new? That's supposed to provide a lot of, uh, daycare for now so that parents will have a safe place for their kids to be so they can go, go to work. It's gonna be the, uh, Little Antlers is, grand opening is on the twenty-eighth of July this week. And I think it's at one o'clock out there. And, uh, Mr. McLeod, uh, Bob McLeod is at the State Health Center, probably someone that you could contact could give you some more information on that.
I, I suspect-
But the County Commissioners, we, we helped, uh, find some money to help them finish putting in that, uh, program up there and renovating that building and so on.
The board wasn't particularly fond of the location they chose, so we may not have been invited intentionally.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 uh, we, I, I-
Oh, pardon, my part.
No, no, it's perfectly fine. I mean, it, it's all moved through now, and we're certainly happy to see more, more daycare for, for students and for working parents and all that kinda thing, so. We may not be happy about how it all came together, but the end result, uh, you know, we understand the need in the community and, and we're, we're supportive of that component, for sure. But good, good to hear they're ready to open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the public? Appreciate y'all sticking with us through the whole long agenda with that.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public according to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, number two, A, personnel, and D, real estate.
Second. Ted, your folks?
Zach?
I.
Neil? And we are headed to non-public.